We'll make it a note. And this time we'll reconvene the budget workshop. And tonight, our project is the expansion budget, which includes each one of the departments that are asking for an expansion in their budget, as well as the other agencies that we funded in the past. The rules tonight is I'm going to keep time. At the end of five minutes, I'm going to gavel you down, which means that I'd like for you to just cut it off. The preference would be if you talk for three minutes, so that we get a chance to ask questions, because if you talk for five minutes, we don't get a chance to ask any questions. We've got 37 groups, if they all show up tonight. So if we have a question, we can follow up maybe with an email to Brian and get some answers, if one of the commissioners wants to do that. We'll get started, unless, Brian, do you have anything to?
Just kind of the ground rules for what you have. You've got a summary on page 171, which lists the department, the page number in your book with the supporting documentation. It also shows what is requested. And remember, because this is an expansion, anybody who received money last year, we left them in the continuation budget. So if they got $1,000 last year, they got $1,000 this year in the continuation budget. If they asked for a dollar more, then they're here on your expansion piece to explain to you why they need that additional funding. Or if they are a new request for funding, they are here to ask for that funding.
Okay, the first is the pay and classification study, and that's you, Brian?
Yes, sir, I'll take that one. It starts on page 173 in your book. As the board recalls, back in 2017, last year, you commissioned a study by the MAPS group to look at the pay and classification plan that was currently in place with the county. That process went through, and they picked out our pure counties in the area that were similar to us, and looked at our pay and classification plan based on what the market was. There were two pieces of that study. The first piece was to bring the positions and the classifications to market, and then it was to adjust based on market and number of years of service in the particular position in order to deal with some of the compression issues that are in the current pay and classification plan. What that means is we've got a lot of folks who are really tightly compressed together because of the way the pay and classification system was put together. Doesn't allow for folks to grow as they work for the county. They just get stuck, and they're unable to move, except for COLAs, and COLAs simply adjust the entire piece. So it doesn't allow for separation, it doesn't allow for pay-for-performance and those kind of things. So this is the first piece. As you recall, at the retreat, the board said, "Bring you back an opportunity to do this over a two-year period." So in working with the MAPS group, they lined that out for us. They had recommended doing it over a two-year period as well. And the first year of that would be the first piece that you see here, and that is to bring up that first section, and then next year, there would be another piece that would go with it. And essentially, it's about equal across the board. The first year is about five. Well, we've calculated, they gave us a big spreadsheet, and we're currently plugging in those numbers. We're showing about 553 with benefits. We think that number's a little bit lower, maybe around 510, but we're still working to make that spreadsheet exactly correct. So it's roughly about a penny for you, if you look at it on the rate. So that's the first piece, that's on page 173. Like I say, the board requested that this come as a two-year piece, so that would be the first year of it. And then we'll see on the next, on that same sheet, it says that next year would require the same piece, because these are recurring revenues. These are not one-time revenues. These would have to be recurring revenues. So any questions on that, I'll be glad to answer.
Any commissioner have a question? This was finished in April of 17, if I remember correctly.
It was done in 17, and I think she did the presentation to the board late 17. September 17. And we talked about it at your retreat and a couple of other times.
If there's no questions, we'll go to the next one. Brian, performance management evaluation.
Yes, sir. The second piece of that, there were several recommendations that came out of the pay and classification plan. There was first the piece that you've just seen, which adjusted it to market and handled those compression issues. And then there was the recommendation that you look at a pay-for-performance system. And that simply allows you to separate out those high-performing employees based on an evaluation system and pay for high performance. So that's this piece that we're showing you. What we would recommend is it's about $40,000 to do that. That's a one-time implementation fee, so it's not recurring revenues. We believe that we're able to, that we would be able to absorb the pay and the performance piece into our existing system without there needing to be a new revenue source on that. This $40,000 that we're talking about is to have somebody come in, establish the performance piece for us, and to put in the software that we would use to track that. And then there's a small piece you see in there recurring, about $3,000. That would be built in our, absorbed in our regular budget for maintaining that software. But that's the second piece of the pay and performance class. The third piece, as you recall, where they recommended was some longevity. We don't have that in the budget, and we don't have a recommendation for you on that. But we do have a recommendation for you on the pay and class, and then on the performance piece.
Questions?
Would that be for the entire workforce?
That would be for the entire workforce.
Every county employee?
Every county employee. And you also have to remember that there's, the funding would be general fund, and then there's water department. They, it pulls out separate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're down to animal control. Carney, would you like to come up?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for being able to present again tonight. You should have in front of you a system expansion for one part-time shelter attendant. If you remember last year's budget, we came forward with a request of a full-time position, and changed that request to a part-time position. Currently, we're sitting with four full-time staff, that's including the chief. And what we want to be able to do with this position is get us a part-time shelter attendant that would be in the hours of the public actually coming in the shelter, to get all of our full-time officers out of the shelter and actually out in the street. So looking at that, you see the cost of that part-time position coming into play. Be glad to answer any questions you may have about that.
The only additional cost that you've got in here is the uniforms and training.
That's correct. There's no vehicle, this is strictly a shelter part-time attendant. So what you see on the sheet is the actual cost, complete cost of that position.
The vehicle that you're going to replace from emergency services, you said that was going to be animal control?
Yes, but we would be cycling a vehicle out of animal control. One that has over 150,000 miles on O4. So there's, this position needs no vehicle, there's no association with that whatsoever. And again, where our part-time workers are right now, we do have a receptionist, dispatcher, that works in the shelter during the public hours, which is 1:00 to 5:00, or 1:00 to 5:30. But we don't have any part-time employees that can help with that time. Our shelter, the one that helps us clean in the mornings comes in at a different time, and our rescue person comes in at a different time before the public comes in. So what we're looking at here is to be able to get, again, our full-time officers out of the shelter and back out on the county roads.
Comments, questions? Thank you. Carney? All right, next item is Beaufort County Community College, one additional school resource officer.
Yes, sir. As you recall, in our budget discussions last night, when we talked about education budgets, we pulled, we pulled the school resource officer, that was a request by the community college, to add an additional police officer to their force to handle the early college program to specifically be addressed for that building. Because there were additional requests for school resource officers in the regular school system, we pulled that out of their budget and showed it as a service expansion, just like we did the others. So this is actually the community college's number 62, 62-962, which they have put to us that would allow them to staff an additional officer with equipment, and that would be recurring dollars.
I think most of our questions were answered last night when Dr. Lupe was here. Anybody have a follow-up?
Brian?
Yes, sir.
So this would give us a full-time, FTE, full-time FTE for that program at the college?
That is what the community college is proposing. They have, they currently have an existing police force at the community college, and they'd like an additional officer, which they have said they would dedicate to the two buildings at which the early college is located. That officer would be dedicated to those two buildings and would stay in that area.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions on the community college expansion, we'll go to the Beaufort County Public Schools. Brian, you going to handle that?
Yes, sir. This is the request for additional school resource officers to put an officer in every building, in every school. You currently have six officers already that are at school systems. This is a request to add a resource officer at all schools. That number is actually seven, I apologize. In our conversation today with Dr. Phipps, ed tech had not been included, so that's, it would be seven total instead of six, to include ed tech. So that total is 665. It's a total of 350. It's about 50,000, it's about 50,000 an officer with benefits for the county. That would be adding an SRO under the sheriff's office. And I think Charlie explained last night that those officers are a little more experienced, and we pay those guys a little bit more because of their training and certification. So we adjust those at about 50, we look at them at about 50 apiece. And then first year, there's about $45,000 for each of those officers for equipment, vehicle, and then things they need. And then that rolls off the next year. So you essentially cut that, that cost for that second year about in half.
Do we have six or seven currently? I can't...
So six.
Six currently. And total number of schools is 14, including the one at ed tech and also the one at the college.
Right. So you would pick up 13 in the community college, which would be separate. They have their own police force, so, yes.
But it's in this budget, in the expansion part?
It is.
Any questions? We had quite a bit of discussion last night, I think, when Chief Rose was here, and Chief Rose has a commencement, I think his daughter is graduating tonight, so we excuse him. Any other questions on the school expansion as it relates to school resource officers? The next item is the Beaufort County Public Schools and slash Community College School Security. This is equipment.
Be glad. So as you recall, the school system gave you a CAPLINT CIP plan for the next five years. You have a copy of that in your book, we gave to you the other night. Roughly, they've estimated about $1.9 million over those next five years for school security needs, and that's infrastructure needs, not personnel, but infrastructure needs, whether that be door locking mechanisms, cameras, closing in corridors, whatever that may be. They've estimated that to be about 1.9 over the next five years. What this proposal does, and of course, also, the community college has given you a little bit, now you've, in our budget that we have for the community college, we have provided them, in their capital, because they came back and reduced their capital cost from last year. And they built into their capital cost the issues that they wanted to address related to the school security piece. They believe they can handle that in their budget, they've talked about that. So what we've done for you here is, we've said, over that five-year period, they're saying about $1.9 million. If you took a penny, if you took one additional penny on the tax rate, which brings about 575, and said, "Take that penny and dedicate it to school infrastructure security issues, and let the school system rank that out as their priority," they should be able to complete that five years' work of CIP in about three years, about three and a half years, at that number, at that recurring revenue number. If you dedicated that one penny, then they could get all that done, that 1.9 that they're estimating that they wanted to do for security issues, in about three and a half years. Then you could simply take that penny, if you wanted to, and just roll it back into their capital, and then reduce the amount that's being appropriated for that. So that is, that's the way we set that one up for you, to take a look at whether you want to do that. Ultimately, the board's decision. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
Brian, I don't know if you know, in the capital budget, you know, they're talking about building connecting corridors, cameras, door locking systems. Well, has any consideration been given for metal detectors? You know, last week, we had a situation, Washington High School, where a student had a gun, some type of gun, a weapon, in their backpack.
Yes, no, I'm not aware of any, of any policy decision on their part to institute such a policy. What we're going off of is their CIP, where they show $1.893 million in safety and security needs over the next five years. That's what we're basing that off of.
And when you get a chance, you could have a conversation with the school superintendent on that, or bring it back to the security committee?
I mean, I'm sure he can certainly address that, because he sits on that committee.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, next item is emergency service, services. Carney, you've got two of these, so I'll let you do both.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Board. First in front of you is EMS wellness supplement. What we are trying to do is start something in our EMS program that will help with the physical agility, the things that are going on that our employees have to go through. Because they're not all at one station, they're moved all over the county, the first thing we looked at was trying to do a one-time purchase of just equipment, but that won't work in our system, because they have to be stationed across the county. So we've looked across the state and other areas of how they've addressed this in the past, and the beginning step of being able to look at this is some type of supplement to their own personal wellness plan. In other words, if they have a gym membership that they're willing to go to, or if this would be enough, what we're looking at is $15 a month per employee that would take us up on this. In other words, if they didn't do it, if they didn't join a gym, if they didn't show some type of effort, they would not be able to apply for this. But just trying to put some type of supplement, $15 a month to anybody that would take us up into trying to do physical agility, helping on the stress factors of those employees. And so be glad to answer any questions you have about that.
That's just for EMS, is that correct?
That is correct, for EMS workers.
You want to go ahead and move into the communications to the command, is it the command center trailer?
This is our mobile command trailer. What we're, what this is, is for a mobile patching system, and I'll try to be as quick as I can with an understanding here. With the introduction of Viper, our 800 radio system coming in through the county, that is an improved communication system. But as far as when we reach out to all our volunteer fire and EMS departments, those radios are very expensive. We went from having a $600 or $700 radio, per radio, to when you get into Viper, now we're talking about $4,000 and $5,000. So we don't have those radios throughout the county as much. So what we have now is two systems just in county emergency services. We have old VHF, and we have Viper. And right now, those radios will not talk to each other. And so the system is going to everybody trying to move over to Viper. That's just in the county emergency services itself. When we jump out to state wildlife, state marine patrol, forestry service, getting into the coast guard, we end up with all kinds of other radio systems. So what we have at an emergency is we have numerous agencies coming in and not able to talk with each other, and it's inefficient. So what we're having to do is duplicate resources beside each other just for the communication factor. So this is a very economical way to make all of that talk together, and only do it when we need to. So essentially, there's a patching device. You see, that costs us $7,200. And then we have to take a radio that we would be using for those channels to go along with that device. We flip a switch, and now they all talk together. There's a disadvantage of this. The disadvantage is you're now tying up a radio channel from 800, a radio channel from VHF, or a radio channel over here, but in the temporary, for our emergency scene, that's okay. So we can turn it on, use it for the emergency, then turn it back off. And it allows all of those agencies, both local government, state government, even federal government, for us to be able to communicate on the scene together. So that's what this is about. We've talked with Vic in 911 Communications about this. The technology for his board to do this is a much greater in cost. This is the cheapest way for us to do it for what we need to do. And he supports this request as well.
Any questions of...
Viper's what the highway patrol uses, right?
That is correct. That's what state EM is using all across the state now. Highway Patrol is the originator of that, and all of state emergency management is going to 800. But it is costly. So even though they put the infrastructure, the towers in to do that, each agency or each vehicle ends up having to get its own radio, and that, again, is at a cost of $4,000 to $5,000 per radio. So it's going to go there, it's just taking time to get all that in place. And in the meantime, our communication's kind of lacking because of that. Any other questions?
There are none. Thank you, Chair. Down to the general fund COLA. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, we bring this to you, as always, when we talk about it, is always a service expansion for the board to consider. It is not something we bake into the budget. So roughly, the general fund department, this only relates to the general fund department when you get into the water department, there'll be a separate piece for that, but this is general fund only. So your general fund budget and salaries is about $8.5 million. A 1% COLA for that is $185,880. It's roughly about, cost of living has been about 1.8% increase. So we gave you one, and then we gave you two. So at one, it's $185,880; at 2%, it's $371,760 on the next page. Those are recurring revenues, so the board would have to find recurring, or that is a recurring expense, so the board would need to find recurring revenues to address that, if you so choose. That takes care of both of those.
I think everybody understood that comment, but I'll entertain a question if anybody... Okay, we're down to page 183, the jail, the rule changes proposed.
Yeah, I think the board hit that pretty good last night with Chief Rose, and that is the proposed rule change that they're seeing coming down the pipe from judicial standards about how detention officers would be required to do additional rounding, and then potentially some additional in-cell work. And their review is that if that were to occur, then they're going to need an additional detention officer per shift, based on those time changes, that they just, you can't, you simply can't do the rounding in the manner and in the timeframe in which the state, we anticipate, is going to require it with the existing staff they have. They would need to add an additional officer per shift, so that would be four additional folks. And that cost is roughly $200,000. I think the board's talked about that, and obviously, it's a state unfunded mandate that's come down in some rule changes, or some proposed rule changes that would take effect, we understand, in January or December of this year. So I know the Sheriff's Association is working hard to have those adjusted to better help us, as well as the Association of County Commissioners, but ultimately, those rule changes come from the state, and we have to abide by them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Our legislators haven't voted on whether they're going to make these changes.
My understanding is it's administrative rule changes that are coming through the judicial standard, through 7J, which is an administrative piece. So they've put it out there, and I think the state is the one, the administrative side is the one that makes that change. It's the rules that are put together by the administrative side to say, "This is what you have to do to do these things."
I'm just thinking that we should allocate that money until they tell us that it is a mandate.
Well, I would agree that you wouldn't do it until you are mandated to do it, but I think you just need to be on the lookout that if it comes down the way we're anticipating it coming down, you're going to have to add folks, and it would be an unfunded mandate, it would be a change in the rules from the state that are requiring counties to do something additional, and not giving you any money to do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Brian, you're correct. It is a proposed regulatory change to a previous piece of legislation. So it's in the Department of HHS, Division of Health Service Regulation, and it talks about December 18th as effective date. Now, we don't know if that's going to happen, I agree with you. But let's say it does happen, December. We can't, the only way we'd be able to fund it then is out of the fund balance, is that correct?
That's correct. And we would still be seeking some direction as we went, if they're going to push you back, if they're going to make a change. The concern we have is that we don't get any direction from the state on it as they're playing around with this, because we obviously can't, you know, it takes us some time to ramp up, to add additional staff, and there's training involved and all that. So we need some, we need some pretty good lead time from the state on if they're going to make any changes, and we're still waiting to understand that.
And I understand it's a stack of regulatory changes like this, and this is only one small piece of that. So if this could get lost in the shuffle, we could end up having this requirement, unfunded mandate from the state. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Brian, the numbers you have in here, that is just for six months, isn't it?
That's a year.
Is that for $200,000?
That's four options.
But it's only, it only starts at January 1?
Well, if we get, again, it gives us some time to ramp up. We may not use every bit of that, but if we needed to add a detention officer per shift, we would need to do that several, I mean, just fairly quickly after the first of the fiscal year, to be able to get them trained and ready, so that when it gets implemented, we have that additional staff. Otherwise, you're going to be pulling it out of overtime, you're going to have to pay additional folks overtime to come in and work that.
Well, you know, the state is not mandating that you make more visits to the cells, because right now, it says two rounds per hour. What they've put in there, which is that they have to be within 35 minutes of each other, and I really don't see where you need more people to do that.
Again, y'all had that conversation with the chief, and he's able to better explain that than I am. I don't work in the jails.
Based on his comments, in order to do what the rule requires, we'd have to have at least one full-time person for each shift. So to do that 24/7, 365, it takes four and a quarter employees.
Plus, Mr. Chairman, the way this rule reads is they have to go inside the cell and actually count the individuals to make sure they're still breathing. You're not going to have one security officer go in and do that, unless you probably...
That's suicide.
And that's the portion that we really need to get changed, because it is, like you said, suicide for an officer to go into that bullpea and count people. That's the dumbest thing I ever heard in my life. I think sometimes the folk can rather just look at numbers and throw things out there, and never reason it out, and never actually ask anybody who actually knows all about what they're talking about, they just simply make decisions. And this is one of those dumb decisions.
As you can see, it was pretty lively last night, just hearing the repeat.
He hasn't gotten over it.
I know.
Drew, I'll go ahead and write that down, so I can quote you too.
But, you know, occasionally hear about mandated rules and state law, and more and more of it's being passed down for the local county to do the financing. And more and more of it's being passed down for the local county to do the financing of it, so. Okay, we're down to, the next item is public buildings, future facility maintenance. Christina? You're not bringing that big book up.
But if I need the other two, they're there. Good evening, Commissioners. This service expansion request is in regards to the facility survey that was completed this past year. One of the tasks that I had been given by many of you were to look at the existing county buildings and because of deferred maintenance that has not occurred over the past years, to look at what it would take in order to schedule maintenance of our existing buildings. So we contracted with EMG, which is a national organization, to come in and to do a survey. They sent in a team of three professionals that came in and spent, it was either two or three days, visited each site. One of those books actually compiles all of the reports that they gave us. But what you have in your packet is the actual summary spreadsheet, which lasts out, which lists repairs for the next 20 years. Looking at that, it's a whopping number. It's showing, including an inflationary factor of over $28 million. So putting that on average, it's about 1.4 annually. So it's a huge project. And just putting this out, again, I'm not, everything that's listed in this schedule, not saying that this is exactly what Beaufort County would choose to do on an individual or annual basis. But what it does is it gives us a starting point to look at, to look at and to realize the condition of our buildings and to give us a starting point of what do we need to do to prepare for the future. And so looking at the service expansion request, that's what this request is putting forward, is looking at an annual reoccurring cost in order to update our buildings and to protect them and to protect the assets of the buildings.
Christina, in your budget, we're spending currently, I think, next year, roughly $500,000 in the maintenance.
On average, it's about, it's around $300,000 to $400,000 of just normal maintenance, simple things, unstopping toilets, light fixtures going out, replacing ballast, things like that. The proposal that I actually presented to the county manager and the finance officer included basically about, I believe, three, just over $300,000 and some $1,000 for that general routine maintenance, just to keep the lights going, to keep the toilets flushing, to keep the doors working, that type of thing. There was an additional $400,000 and some $1,000, which is what EMG classified as immediate repairs, things that they considered to be things that needed immediate action. And so, again, that's around $300,000 for general and then the $400,000 for the immediate repairs. Some of those things, well, you have the schedule, which we're listing it out. But we did go through and eliminate some items. EMG, as a national standard, they recommend that all buildings be, have a fire alarm system as well as a sprinkler system. County manager, finance officer, myself, discussed that. And we did not think that that should be the top priority for the buildings in Beaufort County. So we removed those items from the cost. But general carpet, painting, replacing light fixtures, many of our buildings are not ADA compliant, so things like that were listed in the immediate needs.
If I could add to that real quickly, gentlemen, this is a program that, as you recall, we're currently on a roofing program that the board put in place last year, year before last, where we now know all our roofing issues and we're systematically taking care of those roofing issues. This is a program that will systematically look after and take care of the infrastructure, the buildings and infrastructure. And there's a ton of them that the county owns and maintains. You may not be able to do it this year, but this is something that you definitely, absolutely need to do to maintain the buildings. We don't need, we're far enough behind as it is right now. And we really need to step up and start taking care of our stuff.
Brian, even over 20 years, you're still going to be behind because you could have additional needs.
Well, that's true. But we're at least starting. I mean, one of the things that we've tried to bring to the board over the last couple of years is start some things and get them in place so that we're looking long-term. And we're just not looking at tomorrow because tomorrow's already here. We need to be looking down the road, three and four years, and planning long-term.
And we've never had that.
Tried to bring that to you.
Excuse me, we've never had that, have we?
Oh, no, this is the first time you've had this. That's right.
So if we wanted to do it at the 1.4 million over 20 years, it would be 3 cents in taxes.
It would be if you did that. And I think from what, you know, in Christina's comments, we would agree with that, is that because of some, we could prioritize some of those things and say, if you just dedicated a penny as a revenue stream and set that aside each year and said, this is a capital reserve that is only going to be spent on building renovations, repairs, and those kind of things, then you would have that funding stream to do that. It would be dedicated to it. And you could knock out a lot of these issues and have that through time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But what you're saying is that in order to do the whole thing or the recommended number, it's three pennies.
About two and a half.
Two and a half. Any other questions on future maintenance? You want to go into the Public Works Project Coordinator?
Yes, sir. Along those same lines, I have also included a service expansion for a Public Works major project coordinator. This would be an additional FTE. And the reason for that is, if you read the description there, currently, the Public Works Department overall budget is over $25 million. That's including the current projects that we are currently undergoing, including grants and loans. So that's why that number's at 25 million, the General Fund plus the additional grants and loans. Managing $25 million, that's quite a bit. That's an increase of $14 million since fiscal year 2013, which is an excellent problem to have. That means that we have been very successful in applying for and receiving grants and loans from the different funding agencies. So we've been able to fund quite a few improvements within the county. So again, it's a good problem to have. But what that means, when you are entrusted with that public money, I believe it's important to be a good steward of that money. And in order to do that, there needs to be time spent on managing those projects. So what I have included with those projects is also solid waste. We discussed that a little bit last night. I think we can all agree that the solid waste system in this county, I'm sure that we all received numerous telephone calls in regards to that. And it is my goal to improve that overall system. So a portion of this employee's job description would be to oversee the solid waste capital projects and make sure that, or to assist us in improving that system.
Would any of the salary go to the solid waste enterprise?
I believe we would look at those numbers and determine, I'm not sure initially funding, but a solid waste, I believe, would be bearing a portion of that. If you, also in the description, historically, solid waste, no salary at all, has come out of the solid waste fund. However, looking, we are now, we have reallocated some salary expense, and it would only be my time as well as an administrative assistance time that go towards managing the solid waste fund. And that's over a $3 million fund. And it just appears, I believe, in order to adequately manage that $3 million, there needs, more time needs to be invested in that.
Brian and Anita, would, I'm assuming you would do the administrative charge for the enterprise?
We are currently doing that for the services that are being provided by the General Fund to the enterprise funds. You have that in your book and the basis for that. That is new for us this year. That's not been done before. Again, it's to stop the subsidy from the General Fund to the enterprise funds. Because enterprise funds are designed to stand on their own and to be funded by the fees that support them and not by general tax dollars. So yes.
Any other?
Yeah, sure can.
Christina, our conversation we had last night about looking at the sites we have and possibly upgrading and distances and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
Would this position be involved in that process?
Absolutely. I'm hoping that that position would be my right hand to assist with that. Because, I mean, that is, that's a very, that's not something that I take lightly. I don't believe any of you take lightly. And I'm sure the manager does not take that lightly. So it definitely affects people, and it will be a difficult political decision. But I believe that if we look at the overall numbers, and solid waste is something that you can look at hard numbers for. We can look at the number of hauls that each convenience site takes, how many times are the bins filled, how many times, you know, what's the mileage that we truck those. So those are hard numbers. But getting the numbers, you have to have the time to look at them and to analyze the numbers.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other? Thank you very much. Next two items, where's Bobby?
Where is Bobby?
You're up, Bobby.
Mr. Chairman.
You're going to tell us about the aerial photographs and the new car?
Let's start with the car first. I believe I've got all the numbers I needed there to date, the cost of a new car. We went three months this year without having a car. And it's very costly when a praiser has to go out and then the next day, another praiser goes out. They sit in the office and do their sketching and stuff on a nice day, which I don't like to see happening. So we need, we need a reliable car that'll get them out in the county, to the four edges of the county, and bring them back the same day. We have had used sheriff's cars, the old cars, and they're not very reliable at times. I think one car, if what the price is, is, would last these appraisal somewhere from 12 to 15 years. They take very good care of their cars and the vehicles, and that's about all I have to say about them.
You want to go into the aerial photographs?
Yes. I'm asking for, to get pictometry may be flown later this year, and that would be for 2019. The last time we flew that was in 2015. We've just gone through evaluation. I believe that if we got this aerial photography flown, and we only pay a third of it a year, I believe is what it is, it's $47,000 a year, and the whole project is $143,000. I believe what has been missed in this revaluation, if we got out and looked to review the area, I believe we could pay for this project by picking up enough new stuff that's missed to pay for it. I see stuff missed every day. Buildings, part of buildings are missing, they didn't get it. Some of the improvements that were made to the houses, and it's out there. So I'm asking you to think about this. This is, if we're going further with, I don't know what we're thinking about on changing the cycles of revaluation, but this would be a good starting point. Also, if you notice now, I put one sheet there. If you go down and look at A, the two items under A, this disaster coverage, this, it's on a sheet like this. It's saying that pictometry, if we have a hurricane that is more than category two or more, they will fly 200 square miles of this free. And I know this happened in Raleigh when they had the tornado. It happened on a weekend, and I believe they went, started flying on Monday and released the photography to Raleigh on Friday of the same week. So they get right to it. Also, tornadoes are covered. We've had both. We will have them again. So I think this is something you need to think about. This, by just having 15 compared to 19, I think you'd surprise how much you will pick up. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
On this package I put out there, you'll see what pictometry actually does. It'll give you aerial overhead view. It'll give you all sides of a building. So there's no missing the improvements, there's no missing the additions. If you just look at, do those, you'll see what I'm talking about. It's one of the best. We're finding buildings and trees that you wouldn't have seen any other way.
Is this the same vendor that we used in 2015?
Mm-hmm. All we do would be comparing what we get through 19 against this photography.
Anyone have any questions of Bobby? If not, thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Okay, we finished with the county departments. This time, we're going to go to the outside agencies. And not knowing who is here to speak, I'm just going to read the name of the group, and then if the speaker will go to the mic and introduce herself, that would be great. So we're going to start, it's alphabetical, so if it starts with an A, you're up. The Aurora Fossil Museum.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening, and thank you for having me out here. My name is Cynthia Crane. I'm the Director of the Aurora Fossil Museum. And we have a big event coming up this weekend, and invite you all out to visit the museum and see the upgrades that we've done already. The reason for my visit and the proposal is to ask for funding to increase and enhance the fossil park. We have a park that's an attraction to not only the local community, but also people the world over. They travel near and far to Aurora. They spend time, they stay in hotels in Washington, they eat in Washington and Beaufort County, and they come out and they spend the day in the fossil park. We would like, the Aurora Fossil Museum would like to see if we could get some county support to upgrade some of these structures that we have. In the age of social media, we have photographs all over. And to have some more enhanced educational material out there, some signage explaining the different mining processes that Beaufort County has gone through with the phosphate company, the structures, benches, some more aesthetically pleasing to the park. And also, we do a lot with teachers and school groups and scouts and homeschoolers. So they not only, we not only use the park for visitors, we use it for an outdoor education, outdoor classroom. We use it for birthday parties, reunions, community watch, jams in the park. So it's becoming a centralized point in the town of Aurora. And I'm here to ask for you to consider my proposal to help fund some of the structures to upgrade it. It was a quicker talk than last year. Any questions?
I think we have a good amount of information in here. Anyone have a question?
Some of the structures would be to, would be picnic tables, which are now, currently are wooden, so they have a tendency to splinter if we're not watching them. They would be replaced with the heavy-duty recycled plastic type of structures that are easy to clean and not, won't splinter. And also, some more ADA compliant tables. We have lots of different individuals that come out to the park to enjoy it, and we want all of our visitors to have a good time in Aurora and digging for fossils.
Mr. Langley?
Are there any grant opportunities for you? Have you sought any?
We're looking at some grants, but a lot of them are for capital. They're for, they fund projects and educational components. So they, I haven't really gotten to see or come across any real capital funding grants. I am looking, so.
Okay.
If you have any, please let me know. That way I can look them up and start applying.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The number you give here, I think you said about 18,000, the estimate for this fiscal year, and then about 19,000. Are some of these school groups?
A lot of them are school groups, public school groups. We had a group from Arapahoe today. We get school groups from all over neighboring counties, some from Beaufort County. And a lot of times in the summer, we get the P.A.L. programs, and the Boys and Girls Clubs come out. come out. So we use, it's utilized weekly, and especially in spring and summer. It's, we get, I think at times, we can get up to 100 to 210 first graders that come in these huge buses, and we spoon them up. But they're, when we get letters from the students, the top three things are the big shark's teeth, hunting for fossils, and the glow-in-the-dark rocks. So it's consistent. And you know, children are the best critics, the most honest critics too, so they're good feedback by them. So they enjoy going outside and engaging in science and getting them outside to do stuff, and that would...
And of these numbers, any way to estimate percentage from that account?
We have a visitor book, and I can get some more better data for you. We get a lot of people, a lot of visitors from Beaufort County, from Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next one is the Aurora Recreation.
Glad to address it. It is a request from Aurora Recreation to increase their level of funding by $2,500. You're currently funding them at $4,500, and they're requesting an additional $2,500.
Any questions, comments? Okay, the next one is Beaufort County Police Activities.
Most of the additional national POW programs expose the kids to some type of sport, organized sport, whether it's baseball, football, boxing, martial arts. We opted to deviate from the national POW mission and expose the kids to specifically science and technology and minimize the sporting activities, except swimming. It's IRS-approved 501(c)(3), nonprofit organization that was started in June 2012 to work with low-income and moderate-income at-risk youth regardless of race, sex, color, creed, and we expose them to science, technology, engineering, and math.
At first, I wanted to do about like being an MBA player, but it's not making that one like discover stuff.
Well, I'm trying to make basketball, then either a police officer or scientist.
I'm a media film.
I'd be a doctor in the Navy.
I've been working with B C POW, I'm helping teach STEM class. The first thing the students learn how to do is use 3D modeling software, it's a CAD software, computer-aided design, so we introduce them to that. They start to learn how to draw 2D sketches to render 3D objects, and then eventually, once they're done their project, they'll be able to 3D print it. We also have an engineering car kit, where they'll learn to put together a small electric car, use different gear ratios and pulley ratios, they'll get to race it, they'll change their design, and they'll kind of learn by doing it.
The kids that we have today are, they learn quick. Just seeing them work on the computer, creating 3D models, you know, I'm having them direct me on what to do. They catch on so quick.
For our summer, we have a four-week program. It's our marquee program. It's aviation involved. Some teaching methodology may be a laptop with a remote-controlled drone training service, and then we'll go to perhaps a flight-training tabletop device, which is very realistic in terms of its input and what the planes do. And then this device behind us is Redbird FMX Full Motion Simulator. Redbird is based in Austin, Texas. They're one of the premier manufacturers of flight-training devices in the world for general aviation aircraft, and they're one of our partners. We are, so I'm told, the only organization in the world that's a nonprofit working with kids that has a sophisticated simulator of this type. You find this type of apparatus in a college environment, university environment, or flight school environment, not for kids in the 11 to 15-year-old age bracket. Doing that program, the kids actually get a chance to fly a real airplane. They take a sailing course, and then has operated sailboat on the water, and so they come out with a lot of confidence-building exercises that they can take, hopefully, away and cause them to do things for the rest of their life.
My first year was last year, and we made, tried to make airplanes, you know, trying to know how airplanes work, different parts of airplanes. Went to all these different army bases.
When I retired, I was the Chief of the County Attorney in FBI Headquarters, runs some pretty sophisticated programs. And one of the things that came out of that exposure was, no matter what part of the world you're talking about, kids are not born to hate. That is an acquired trait that they are exposed to in their environment. And we can give kids positive motivations, peaceful alternatives to their environment through specifically education. We can keep smart kids enjoying hate groups, terrorist groups, committing criminal activity.
Most of all, hopefully, they just become a little excited about some kind of STEM career.
I'm going to have a couple minutes to say hello.
Would you mind turning those lights?
Thank you, Katie. Those were the Boys and Girls Club. We worked very closely with the Boys and Girls Club, and also with the Aurora Fossil Museum, as was mentioned earlier. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for your support last year. This is a new one-time request that I'm making this time. We completed our new building that you just saw in February 2018, and it costs us $240,000 and $40 a square foot to construct that building. It normally costs about $60,000 a square foot. Our major setback was removing an old septic field that was discovered after we started excavation, and it cost us $22,000 to correct this situation before we could start construction. Then we faced an additional $10,000 in smaller material costs. Our board and officers loaned the POW program $32,000 to fix the building so we could start working with other nonprofits that use programs now in Beaufort County. So we're asking for a one-time contribution of $15,000 to help us pay this debt. And the video you showed is just an example of what we're doing in our program, and our program has brought national and state attention to Beaufort County and the airport. So that basically is my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one is the Beaufort Hyde Martin Library.
My name is Amanda Corbett, and I'm the new Director for the Beaufort Hyde Martin Regional Library System. I would like to thank you for your continued support for Beaufort County libraries. I'm here tonight to request additional funds to support those libraries, which include the Beaufort Hyde Martin Regional Headquarters in Washington, the Hazel W. Guilford Memorial Library in Aurora, the Bath Community Library, and the Bell Haven Public Library. To begin, the motto of the library is Read, Connect, Learn. As part of our five-year strategic plan, the goals and objectives of BHM and the Beaufort County Libraries is focused on building a community of readers. By adding materials, we will provide a strong foundation for building the literacy skills of Beaufort County residents. Also fostering learning and exploration, we need to provide access to current, relevant, and accurate information. We also need to provide resources to meet the educational goals of Beaufort County residents. And we are focused on promoting the joy of reading. We need to add books that are current, diverse, and will continue to build the collections at each of the Beaufort County libraries. Over the last 10 months, Beaufort County libraries have been very busy. Combined, we have circulated more than 34,000 books and 4,000 DVDs. This translates into a value of more than $620,000 for Beaufort County residents. This value, along with the following values, were calculated using the Library Use Calculator from the American Library Association. If we look at these two statistics alone, for every dollar that Beaufort County appropriates to the Beaufort County libraries, you receive $2.97 in value. Also during the year, your libraries have hosted 236 adult and juvenile literacy programs with an attendance of over 3,000 patrons. Additionally, more than 2,000 residents have received assistance in applying for jobs. We hosted events and formed a partnership with NC Works. If you add up all the services that Beaufort County libraries provide, the value is over $1 million. Overall, for every dollar that you give Beaufort County libraries, you receive $5.03 back in value. This year, Beaufort County libraries are requesting $218,000, which is an increase of $9,500 from last year. These funds will support the purchase of additional children's materials, which connects directly with our five-year strategic plan. We would like to add current and appealing titles for young readers to help build their literacy skills, expand their learning skills, and to foster a joy of reading. We would also like to provide salary adjustments for employees that are at the lower end of the pay scale. Over the last four years, we have experienced an 82% turnover rate. I believe that by adjusting the pay scale, we would be able to reduce the cost of having to constantly hire and train employees, and it would also allow Beaufort County libraries to maintain a consistent level of service for residents. Now, I would like to talk a little bit about what we have done and are doing. At the BHM Regional Headquarters, the Youth Services Outreach Librarian has developed partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, the Literacy Task Force, Partnership for Children, and recently participated in the Week of the Young Child Event. We are currently developing programs to support our annual summer reading program. This year's theme is Libraries Rock. We provide public computers, internet access, and we're the home base for the courier who delivers materials to Beaufort County libraries, preschools, and daycares each week. At the Hazel W. Guilford Memorial Library, they have developed partnerships with Beaufort County Community College and with NC Works. They have storytime programs each week and are busy planning summer reading programs for toddlers to teens. They also provide monthly computer classes and have free GED classes each week for Beaufort County residents. This partnership with the Community College has been very successful. Currently, the GED classes are in such high demand that there's a waiting list. At the Bath Community Library, they have an active youth services department, which offers toddler storytime, conducts school tours, and they're busy planning summer programs for toddlers to grade-school kids. They also provide adult programming with monthly yoga classes, seasonal jigsaw puzzles, and they host a book club. In conjunction with the Blackbeard 300th Celebration, they will host a community event featuring the Pirates of the Caribbean on Stranger Tides movie. At the Bell Haven Public Library, they have developed a strong partnership with NC Works and Legal Aid. They host Arthur signings.
Five minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you.
The next one is Boys and Girls Club.
My name is DJ Jones. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Boys and Girls Club, the Coastal Plains, and Beaufort County happens to be one of our seven counties that we serve in eastern North Carolina. Thank you again for this opportunity, for the continued support over the years for the young people that we serve here in Washington, also in Bell Haven. With our proposal, we're just asking to continue assistance to be able to provide the programs in our two facilities that we're now serving. If you haven't been to the site over at Broad Street, we had a ribbon cut not too long ago for renovation, over $100,000 renovation that we provided to that facility to be able to serve more kids. And with the recent partnership with Northeast Elementary and in Pintown, we're able to serve more kids in our Bell Haven location as well, which gives us opportunity to not only attract more young people, but also give them the hope and opportunity. You heard several, the first, several of the organizations that we partner with, with Aurora Fossil Museum, the POW, and also with the library, and plus to be able to provide those opportunities for our young people is integral and be able to make sure they're on the right path for future success. One thing that we are focusing on, especially this summer and the continuous years, is workforce readiness, but also making sure they are exposed to STEM, as you heard from some of the organizations. We see ourselves not only as a recreation center as we once were seen as, or even a youth development organization, but more of a community development, because we're getting those young people on the front end, exposing them to these opportunities, and we're putting them on the right path. Of last year, we served over 170 young people in our program, looking to serve over 200 this year, and continue to grow those opportunities. What you all have provided is a platform for these young people to be the future leaders for this community and any community that they are a part of. So just want to thank you on behalf of the Boys and Girls Clubs, those 200 young people that we're looking to serve this year, and to be able to continue to provide opportunities for Washington and Bell Haven and the greater Beaufort County as well.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
So much.
If you do have a cell phone, will you please turn it off? Okay, the next one is Citizens on the South Side Together.
My name is Charles Cannon. I am a Director of Citizens on the South Side Together. We're located on South Side, Beaufort County. We are located on Highway 33 East in Bluts Creek. Again, Coast Board of Director would like to thank you for your continued support, Commissioners. Last year was a successful year for us. More people were using our park for birthday parties and family reunions, or even have cook-ops and everything. And this year, our goal is to even be better. Coast is requesting $3,000 to enable us to continue providing program and service to improve the quality of life for low-income families. With your continued support and partnership with other agents and fundraising, we propose to purchase a sports play stand-alone shared structure. We feel with this added piece to the park, we attract even more school and children. The plan for the share is to house our next piece of playground equipment, but until we get the piece of equipment, we will use the share for our after-school and summer program. A new piece has been added to our summer program this year. We're area pastors, we'll volunteer, and soon the road of working with our youth in reading, building self-esteem, and getting along with others. The share would be a perfect for teenagers that have enrolled in this program this summer. Six oh four have enrolled already. This summer, this summer program will make a meaningful difference in the lives of our youth and help create a safe community and to help build a self-esteem. And this summer, we want to help our children to strengthen street and be more meaningful to this area, to our area. And we are trying to help build self-esteem in our children, you know, to lift them up, to let them know that everybody is somebody, and you know, and be a good role model for somebody. We've got role models for our children, and we're trying to get the children out of trouble and in the park this summer.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next four items is the City of Washington.
Thank y'all for having us. I've got a report here that's from Martin, so the numbers are absolutely correct. And what it shows is I got him to, I did something about stuff a month or two ago, and it's really a seven-page report that you find really helpful, you go through all the informants and democrats, all the democrats that you have. But the point I want to make for this conversation is, there's 27,000 people living in six miles of East Main Street. He drew, he put a dot on East Main, drew six miles out, which is, you know, near about two-thirds of the county, and we got 10,000 people in the city of Washington. And, you know, just serving where we are is, you know, we're serving the 27,000 pretty much. I know Chalk Winnie has some recreation, but we have a ton of recreation. I went out and watched my granddaughter play softball, and she said, "You got to be out at 7:30 on Saturday morning." And I said, "What in the world are we playing softball?" You know, we use the fields all day, so we start at 7:30. So that's where y'all, you want to go through them, Matt?
Good evening. Matt Rochamont from the City of Washington. I'll just go over a quick recap. We've got four requests before you, similar to what we presented this past year. There's one difference between them, though, and I'll go over that in just a minute. First facility is the Aquatic Center. Changed our approach in the amount of our requests. In prior years, it was based on the level of participation. We requested a much higher amount... We requested a much higher amount. This year, we've tempered it down to what we thought was a more reasonable request, and hopefully you would consider that. And for the Aquatic Center requesting $50,000 to help fund the $478,000 budget for the Aquatic Center. And for the Aquatic Center, 55% of the patrons or participants who use the Aquatic Center are not city residents, so that would be county residents. The next facility would be the Brown Library. Brown Library's budget is probably $600,000. 67% of the patrons in the library are county residents. And we're requesting $50,000, which is an increase or expansion request of probably $42,200 over what's in your current budget of, or current plan of $7,800. The third area is for the recreation facilities, for the parks and the playgrounds and the ballfields. Total budget for those operations is right at $1.2 million. 58% of the participants in the youth sports are non-city residents or county residents. And in the past, you've provided $20,000, and we appreciate that support. It really, really does help. But we've increased our request up to $50,000, so for an additional $30,000, we appreciate your consideration on that. And finally, we have the Senior Center. Total budget is about $280,000 for the Senior Center, right at 50% of the participants that utilize that facility are non-city residents. In the past, you've been generous and supported us with $20,000, and we've increased our request up to $50,000 for an additional $30,000. We appreciate your consideration for that. Any questions the mayor?
Sandra, you want a minute? Going back to the library again.
Matt, what's your budget on the Senior Center?
Senior Center's $280,000.
Man, what does the city of Washington charge non-city residents to play sports?
It's currently, it's $15 per participant.
And how much do you charge city people?
Currently, it's $15, yeah. Effective July 1st, it is changing to $25 for non-city.
And how many participants do you have over a period of years' time?
In youth leagues, or which particular one?
Any sport that is played in the city.
I guess about 1,300 or something like that.
Any other questions, Sandra? Did you want to add anything?
This is Sandra Silve, she's the Brown Library.
Don't be bashful. I mean, between the four groups, you got 20 minutes, so you still want to?
Oh, okay. I'm Sandra Silve. I'm the library director at Brown Library, and I'll just give you some statistics on how busy we are there. Last year, we had 92,535 people come through our doors from the one building. We circulated 90,103 items. 67% of our cardholders, not just who comes through our door, but the cardholders, active ones, are county residents, and they live outside the city. And we don't want to cut our services. We want to keep them great, and we want to help the literacy level of the county, so the funding would be greatly appreciated. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
When you look at the percentage of city residents vis-à-vis the percentages of non-residents, and what the charges you're going to make now on, or increase in charges, of course, for non-residents vis-à-vis residents, what type of impact does that have on the funding? So, yeah, let's say you have 30% city residents, 70% county residents, and you're charging, let's just talk recreation, $25 a head vis-à-vis, I guess, $15 a head.
Are you talking about if we go to fees?
Yeah.
If we go to?
I guess, yeah. I just need one example.
I think if we got the $50,000, we wouldn't have to go to the fee. Is that correct?
That would be up to the council, but that would be the opposite. You can't do both.
Right, you can't do both.
For libraries, right. You'd have to do one or the other.
Okay, so what you're saying then is, is if we gave, I guess, $50,000, then we wouldn't have to do a fee.
Correct.
What about recreation?
And that ain't gonna work. I mean, they're already hiring, you know, people don't know where they live. They say, we live in Washington, and they can live at the Country Club Estates or something, you know, down at the Country Club, or they could live out on Market Street Extension. So, we are, I'm already figuring that this thing is gonna just be a pure nightmare because the people that be collecting the money won't have the earth for idea that they live in the city, if they don't live in the city. So, I mean, what we'd like to do, and what we'd do, and we'd set our request down substantially. And I think if the county would step up, we need help with all this. It just gets worse and worse every year. It seems like probably half the people in the swimming pool is, our pal take, they all go to the pool all summer, boys or girls, same, the same thing they do, but then Washington Swimming Team wins two state championships, and I'm sitting there thinking, well, they should because no other little town like Washington has an Olympic-sized swimming pool that they can go practice in, you know, out there every day. Who else? You know, we're losing $300,000 a year with that swimming pool. And probably, you know, I think they got 400 members, 400 members or something, that are members and go out and do water aerobics and swim laps. They got a little weight room in there. You know, they carry some of the load, but a lot of it is putting the pool in. I remember when they put it in there 20 years ago, Reverend Hobart was at Episcopal Church, and he said, if you live on the water, you need to have a pool, teach all the kids. And his goal was, his idea was, everybody in school should go and learn how to swim. If you live in Beaufort County, you got water all over the place. That was his. It works somewhat like that, you know, different groups, you know, and a lot of kids go out, especially in summer, it stays full of them.
Mr. Evans? Can you give me that number again on people that come through the doors and the cardholders?
Last year, the door count was 92,535.
92,000?
Yes, sir. And we circulated 90,103 items.
And the cardholders?
And the cardholders, 67% are county residents outside the city. And if we charge the fee, which we have to come up with the funding from someplace, we don't want to, some people aren't going to be able to afford it, and they won't be using the library. And we don't want to cut services, and we don't want to make the access more difficult for people. We want them to be able to come in because the county needs this.
Matt? I've got, I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
When you, when you look at your upcoming budget, what is the total amount of electric utility revenues?
33 million.
33 million. What's your total sales tax revenue for the city?
Sales tax, right at 2.5 million.
2.5 million. Will you, will you refresh, I asked this question, I think, two or three years ago, what percent of the people on your utilities live outside the city limits of Washington? Or percentage of your gross revenues of the 33 million?
That's tough. I can tell you, as far as customers, it's probably two-thirds or 65% are outside the city. You've got the concentrated commercial in the city, so that skews the revenue portion of it. As far as actual customers, two-thirds are outside the city's limits.
So, the money you transfer from the utilities over to your budget to balance it includes revenue that you're getting off of people outside the city limits in the county?
True.
That was modeling?
But that knows a little, I know like hospital electric bill will take care of three roads in the county, you know, I mean, they, hard case telling that roadie every day, how bad is electric bill when it comes? Jerry knows what it is, and Walmart, and yes, I mean, they get, you don't know what percent is commercial.
No, I'm putting it out of my head, no.
The point I'm trying to make is, the sales tax, part of that's coming from people outside the city limits, and part of the utilities is coming from outside. So, county residents are already subsidizing this recreation.
Yeah, but I mean, put South Side of Rober and down where you live, don't pay the electric. I mean, it's just.
I don't, I don't drive up here. When I drive up here, I spend money.
I see you up there.
I spend money when I'm up there.
But you buy your electricity from down in Bellhaven.
That's right. Any, any other comment? You've got the utility revenue that the county does not have. Our revenue stream primarily is property tax and sales tax.
You got, you got order tax.
So, that's.
Auto tax.
That's.
You got enterprise.
Brian says that's an enterprise. That's an enterprise. Any, any other questions?
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you for what you do. Okay, we're down to the next item, Food Bank of the Albemarle.
Chairman Waters, thank you. Commissioners, thank you very much. My name is Liz Reasoner, and I'm here to talk to you about our request. We put in a request to the county for an appropriation of $2,500. That will enable us to provide over 12,000 pounds worth of food to Beaufort County, and on an annual basis, we provide over 1 million pounds of food into Beaufort County. If you, if you remember from past discussions, this food bank in Elizabeth City serves 15 counties, and Beaufort County is one of our hubs that we supply food to because we are mandated through our agreement with Feeding America to serve those 15 counties. There are seven Feeding America food banks that serve North Carolina, and we are one of seven. And we work as a collaboration through a network of hunger relief partners like Eagle's Wings, Mother of Mercy, Martha Project, those entities that draw from the resources that come into the food bank, and we bring that food down here. And the partner agencies are able to stock their shelves with those resources. The value of the food that is brought down here in, on an annual basis, if you look at the By the Numbers report for Beaufort County, is over $2 million. And that is a significant investment in the hunger relief efforts that go on here in Beaufort County because you have a population of one in six that lives with food insecurity or hunger. So, you've got a real issue that, that stands up even during the best of times where poverty is a real issue in, in each of our communities in northeastern North Carolina. It's not going away. The infrastructure for jobs that would come in to provide a living wage for a lot of the folks that would elevate them out of poverty are not coming anytime soon. I've been doing this job for more than 23 years, and I have to tell you, the economic situation here in northeastern North Carolina is not changing. Unless there's jobs that come in to create that, that income stream, we're not going to see a shift away from that. But what we are going to see is programs like the Food Bank of the Albemarle, working with our hunger relief partners to make sure that children have enough food as they go to school, they go home on the weekends, they, they go through the summer months when they need food and food is not available. You have so many of the children down here that are eligible for free and reduced meals. They receive those during the school year, but unless they have immediate access to a summer feeding program, they, they go home, and the family is then required to provide those necessary meals during the off months or during breaks during the school season. So, the food bank provides the resources to the partner agencies that then provide the resources and the groceries that go home with families that need it during, during the times of, of the month when maybe their food stamps won't last so long. The last time I checked, I, it's my understanding that food stamps last 16 days of the month. Well, last time I also checked, there's more than 16 days in any given month. And a lot of times, families are having to make tough choices as to whether or not to pay their water bill, pay their electric bill, pay their utility bill, put gas in the car to go to a part-time job that helps them kind of bridge the, the need for the household. There's a lot of, a lot of need in northeastern North Carolina, and for $2,500, we're asking for your support because it demonstrates your commitment to the work that we do in Beaufort County and allows us to take that to the other counties that we serve and leverage that so that we can say, Beaufort County is at the table with us. They believe in what we do. They are supporting the Food Bank of the Albemarle on the work that we do on the ground in Beaufort County. So, I'm here to take any questions that you might have.
Come in. I know y'all come to First Church of Bryce. Y'all feed, well, we feed about 200-plus families in a man ministry program.
Thank you for.
Very appreciative of, it's a very good program.
I, I think we have 17 different groups.
Yeah, 17 programs that draw from the Food Bank of the Albemarle. Our trucks serve, our food bank provides more resources to Beaufort County than we do to our own home county of Passant County. And I'm proud to say that the Elizabeth City, City Council and the Passant Commissioners have put, put in their, their budgets and appropriation. Elizabeth City just put us in the non-recurring, in the recurring budget for $20,000 a year, and Passant has us in the budget for $10,000 a year. So, you know, it takes resources from private sector, grants, government contributions, and, you know, food contributions for us to be able to do the good work that we're doing. And I'm very proud to tell you that 97 cents of every dollar goes right back into programs. There are not a lot of programs out there that can say that there's, they have that kind of an efficiency rate and can have that kind of an impact with your dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Next one, Highway 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. I brought you a little packet that you can look at at your convenience. But the first page, I'll share a couple of highlights as we continue to work on improving US 17 to support the safety, mobility, and economic development of Beaufort County. The R-2511 project, which is improvement of 17 from Old Ford up to Williamson, is on track for right-of-way acquisition to acquire the rest of the property needed to, to improve that stretch beginning this December. The bid will be let, I'm told, in June of 2020, so that'll mean we'll be moving dirt up there before the end of calendar year 2020. There'll be an informational meeting this coming August about the project. I don't have the date and location just yet, but as soon as I get that, I'll pass it along. Commissioner Busio represents your interest on our board, which we appreciate, and Mr. Alli-Good is on our finance committee and keeps us straight financially. The other two projects are south of Washington, would link Washington to New Bern, basically. The 2513 project is the five miles south of Chalkawinity where the four-lane ends down toward Vanceboro. The first segment of that project, which was the last link in the chain, has been programmed and funded. That doesn't get us all the way there, but it allows DOT to do the environmental document for the entire project, which is a big deal. So, they'll be able to do the EIS for the entire 21 miles or approximately, even though they just have the first segment funded. The rest of it is south of NC 43 down to the four-lane at Bridgestone, but that would, when they're all done, and the construction on the last one begins in 2022, would link Beaufort County to South Carolina on a four-lane road, which is obviously a big deal. The freight mobility study is underway. The Mideast RPO is participating in that. The idea behind it is to improve the scoring of our projects by demonstrating that the connectivity that we have with our roads in eastern North Carolina supports freight movement, and that can counteract the advantages that the metropolitan places have with their statistics about congestion. This middle sheet is actually from the NC DOT. It's not my document, but I thought I'd share it with you because the Build NC program is a program that the department is asking the General Assembly to consider this summer. The House of Representatives will introduce the bill, but it's basically. But it's basically a program that would enable the department to sell transportation bonds, to go ahead and build projects that are shovel-ready. There's already a program that, they do that with federal funds, Garvey bonds, which in fact largely financed the Washington bypass. But this would recreate that using anticipated state revenues. But the thing that's pertinent for us is the third bullet point down under the yellow block that says, offers a financing tool that rural communities have never had access to before. What that means is that no projects identified in the statewide tier would qualify for this program, only those in the regional and division tier. And if you've paid any attention to the last several steps, the metropolitan places have gotten all the money because their projects get funded at the statewide level. So we've been kind of waiting to pick up table scraps. But if the General Assembly authorizes the department to pursue this, it would largely benefit the rural places. So I would be enthusiastic about that if it moves forward. And I don't want to take up more of your time, but I'm happy to take questions, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate Beaufort County's continuing support.
Mr. Biddy?
Mark, when is the scheduled date for 17 from Washington to Williamson?
The right-of-way begins December this year. The bid will be led, as I understand it, from John Abel, who's the project manager, in June of 2020.
So the funding is there for that?
The funding, it's fully funded, $72.1 million. It's in the step, it's deliverable. So it's moving forward.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next one is Kay Lee's Corner Foundation Rock Museum.
Well, thank you, Commissioners and Chairman. We, we're just here for, we have a very small request. We have a rock museum in Bell Haven. We've been established about three years. It's, it's under the same program, or it's a program under the same foundation as the Senior Club of Bell Haven and the Arts Council. We teach children there, and we, we have a, we already have a building. It's a beautiful building, and we've got a fabulous display of rocks from all over the world. We have workshops where kids come in, and we teach day-long workshops. We go out to schools and we do teaching. Sometimes we'll teach one child, sometimes we'll teach 30. We have equipment for cutting, polishing, for making jewelry. And it's, it's, it's a lot of fun for the kids. We talk a lot about the different earth sciences, depending on the age. The second, fourth, and eighth grades have it in their curriculum in school to study rocks. And so we make it a lot of fun for them. We have classes for the kids. They, we create collections for all of them. So they get a collection when they come to the class. We've done hundreds of these. We serve hundreds of kids. We haven't had much of a budget to work with. It's mostly been out of pocket. Last year, we got one $1,000 donation. So most of this, we've just been doing ourselves. We're very passionate about it. I put together, I, I founded another 501(c)(3) back in Utah, our hometown. And it's now 200-strong. They go out to the schools and teach kids. And so it's, it's a lot of money. What we're requesting is money to cover things like, just like, like tools and equipment that we need for the children for safety, like their plugs, glasses, and that. Because we, we will saw rocks, and so they've got to be safe with those things. We have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, full classes, seniors, adults. We do all kinds of classes. They always receive a, a copy of a National Geographic when they come to the class. They receive posters. We have nice posters for teaching. We talk about mining, we talk about volcanoes, we talk about dinosaurs and the tectonic plates. That's something, I brought a little disc here, a rock, the rock cycle. We have different types of rocks. Minerals especially are interesting because we can talk about the things they do in their, in their everyday life, what they use for their toothpaste and baby powder and light bulbs, and what things are done with minerals. Yeah, building, buildings, class. This is, I think you got a copy of our pictures, but I thought I'd show one. This is some of our classes. I think that was a Girl Scout class. We have buses bring schools in. We have them coming from, we had one recently from Greenville that came in, brought a busload of kids in. We'll be also at the event on Saturday with Cynthia at the Aurora Festival in the education tent. We do that every year. And we teach them things like the age of rocks, how rocks are formed. Yeah, I mean, I can talk all day long. Volcanoes, and I do usually. Spend a lot of time on the phone, too. We talk about volcanoes. When I mentioned the tectonic plates before, the thing with Hawaii now that's going on, if, can I put this in the machine here?
I don't think that has a...
Doesn't have a reader?
Does it have a reader? Oh, okay.
You just have one minute.
Okay. This is just, this is just the USGS activity with volcano in Hawaii. I've been tracking that and following that because that's something we'll share with our students. Because we do talk about volcanoes. We have projects for them when they're in class, like... When we talk about the minerals, we actually have them build the different shaped minerals. So we can explain...
Crystal structure.
This is, this is how they're identified. Yeah, they all have their own structure, and that's how they are identified. We talk about the hardness of rocks. We talk, fill in where I'm leaving out because I'm throwing everything in.
We're almost done. But yeah, with the hardness and the, the uses, and we teach lapidary. I've got equipment that can cut stone and make cabochons. And they're always fascinated with that. The air plugs are for that when they're watching you do that equipment because it gets kind of loud, especially the saws. When you use a diamond blade cutting the rock, it takes a while and it's a lot of noise.
And we are 100% volunteer. And we don't have a lot of building costs at this point. But we need money for specimens for the children, for, for small equipment, for small-scale models of fossils and things like that to display. But come see our museum. It's fabulous. We've got a beautiful display.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next one on here is Agape.
Good evening, Commissioners. Use your... Can I use?
Sure.
Yes. My name is Carol Taylor. I'm the Director of the Dental Program at the Agape Community Health Center. I have a small presentation to... I want to thank you for your donation of last year. It was very helpful. It would allow Agape to not only be open one and a half day a week to four days a week. We're back again asking for continued support. Our numbers have grown. The word that we're open four days a week, the word mouth is out. We're booking now dental patients to, we're in November. I had a patient today that we, I couldn't get her on until November, and that was kind of heartbreaking for me. So I just asked her to walk into the clinic. And we would, if she didn't mind waiting, we would see her. My dentist that we have is kind of burned out. I think I'm going to lose her if, you know, I don't get her some help. So I ventured out to ECU. I have two candidates that are interested. One graduated from ECU in 2016. The other candidate is a fresh graduate. I'm in the process now of doing a background investigation. Your assistance this year will allow me to bring on a new, another dentist for the area and a hygienist. Budgeting, okay, it's a PowerPoint. I know I got a million on here. No, that's... It says, oh, my... This is it, thank you. Okay. Do it for, thank you. Okay, our dental clinics, we have broken down the numbers by zip code in town. Shows that Washington is out leading the pack for 2017. I can let you guys know that I am scrutinizing patients coming in from other counties, from other areas. If there's no insurance, they're, they're not seen first. They don't get first choice of the, of the scheduled appointments. So the patients that are coming into our clinic, the numbers that's represented today are patients that are from this county. Children have grown from last year. Last year, we only gave services one and a half day a week. We're now open four days a week. Beaufort County Head Start has reached out to me. We've gone into ventures with them where all their Head Start students are coming into our clinic. Even the high school nurses, middle school nurses, and the elementary school nurses have reached out, and they're bringing the students into our clinic. My provider has gone out to the schools, and we have given seminars. We've talked to kids about healthy brushing teeth after each meal, what their intake of, what they're bringing into, and how it affects the oral cavity. So the numbers for our patients walking into our dental clinic has grown, and the waiting list is overwhelming. Also, on our medical side, the numbers are growing because children have parents, parents are following the children. So I wanted to let you guys know that Metropolitan Community Health Center, we are supplying the need to the community. The numbers are growing. Behavior health is a new program that has, has grown also. We are now over 100 patients. So with the opiate crises that we're having, has plagued our county, our area. It is a disease. So Metropolitan Community Health Center, we are working hard with supplying that need to the area. Right now, our new additions, we are looking for new providers and clinicians to help fight that opiate crisis that we're having. And I've gone through it quite fast, and I will send this over to the clerk. Our pharmacy is also filling somewhere between 400 and 500 scripts a month, or more. This is 2017. I do know we just hired another part-time pharmacist in our pharmacy. So all over the clinic, the numbers are increasing. There is a need for this type clinic to, to continue to be in the community. We are working hard to serve, but they're, they're just growing overwhelming towards, over there. So we're asking for the support. I'm asking for the dental clinic because that number has, has overwhelmed a little bit here. I'll outreach it to the community. We do back-to-school, yes, sir?
Five minutes.
Okay. We do back-to-school health screenings. Before kids go back to school, we give away book bags to kids. During the winter time, we give free flu shots. Like I said, we work with Beaufort Head Start. We give away toothbrushes at Kids Fest, and then we just started our chronic disease management program over at the clinic. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Next is the North Carolina Estuary.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Woolard. I'm the Executive Director of the Partnership for the Sands. And the partnership is the nonprofit that operates the North Carolina Estuaryum. The most exciting message I can impart this evening is that the Estuaryum is celebrating its 20th year of operation this year. For us, and we hope for you, that means that we must be doing something meaningful, and we must be doing it well. After 20 years, our visitation is on a steady climb. And it's, if the first four months of this year is any indication, we're poised to surpass our projections for 2018. So far this month, we have welcomed 1,416 paying customers. We have lots of people that come in and just look around. But that's 1,416 and adding about 55 that were there today. And those include visitors just this month from 23 other states. In your packet, there is a visitation breakdown from county and state and other states and other countries. But you have that information, so I won't take the time to go over it. School groups are still our target audience, and teachers are some of our best repeat visitors. They bring their classes, their new classes back year after year after year. And added addition to our school programming this year is teacher training and place-based education because teachers are recognizing the benefits of a particular brand of experiential education, which is based on our regional environment, what, what they, what they learn and what's outside the door in Beaufort County and beyond. Our local residents are also loyal visitors and supporters. They serve as program volunteers, as River Raven captains. They bring their house guests, and many come over and over again, bringing their grandchildren. New visitation is also on the upswing as Beaufort County and Washington are receiving lots of statewide media exposure as an inviting destination for travelers. Making a trip here from the triad or the triangle area, people expect more than just a scenic stroll along the waterfront. They want things to do and things to see in order for their visit to be successful and to be lengthened. The Estuaryum fills that expectation for them. And it's a fortuitous opportunity for us, once they come in the Estuaryum, to not just entertain them, but to educate them about a healthy estuary, what it is, and how important it is to the entire health of the state. Over the last 20 years, the Estuaryum has earned a reputation as a credible source of science and history of North Carolina's estuarine region. Our, our education narrative has been used by K-12 schools, community colleges, four-year universities, science-based organizations from across the state and actually beyond, have solicitate, solicited Estuaryum staff for advisory positions and instructional programs. It is imperative that the information we have on display and that the staff imparts to the public be accurate, be impartial, and be contemporaneous. And in that light, we are proceeding specifically to, to use a portion of our requested appropriation to upgrade and replace some exhibits to make sure that they meet those standards of being really contemporaneous, that we're giving factual information and really timely and up-to-date information. Over the last 20 years also, the Estuaryum has earned a good reputation as a viable catalyst for local economic development. While we cannot provide hard numbers on the economic impact of visitation, we can extrapolate known variables on commerce. We charge admission, we pay salaries to employees who shop in Beaufort County. We buy from local vendors, we pay utilities, insurance, and other operating costs. Our visitors and the people who rent the facility for functions add to that economic impact. They buy lunch, gas, and they shop. They hire caterers, florists, entertainment, and rent hotel rooms. As our exhibits require repairs and updates after 20 successful years, so do our basic interior furnishings and fixtures. Specifically, we will use a portion of our requested appropriation to replace and repaint and repair various building components in the public areas, mainly for, some for appearance, but mainly for safety, such as fray and carpet and safety strips and new locks and things of that nature. The most important message that I can impart to you this evening is the mission of the Estuaryum, which is to be a catalyst for environmental stewardship and sustainability. That mission is still relevant, and it's still necessary to the health and prosperity of Beaufort County. On behalf of the partnership and the Estuaryum, thank you for the opportunity to present, and we most appreciate your support.
Thank you, Jack. Our next one is Open Door Community Center. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to appear before you. My name is Marcia Norwood. I'm the interim Executive Director of Open Door Community Center. With me is Jeff Rumley, Fundraising Chair. Open Door Community Center has been established to address an unmet need facing some of the most vulnerable Beaufort County residents. Currently, there is nowhere in Beaufort County that provides safe shelter and hope to women and their children who do not have their own home. Zion Shelter serves men aged 18 years of age and older. Ruth's House serves those dealing with domestic violence. Rose Haven will serve female veterans. Greg Singleton, Executive Director of Federal Programs for Beaufort County Schools, gives the number of homeless children in Beaufort County as: June of 2015, 48 homeless children; June of 2016, 99; June of 2017, 124. These numbers do not include their mothers. During the week of February 5th through 9th of this year, he informed us that 12 children were reported as homeless. That's 12 children in five days. The need is great. The goal of ODCC is to provide the women and their children with safe shelter up to six months. The women, working with the case manager, will analyze their unique situation to determine what steps need to be taken to help them become ready to be in their own home. As their future unfolds, it is our hope they will be in a position to give back to Beaufort County.
My name is Jeff Rumley and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to each and every one of you. What I'd like to do is just kind of give you a brief synopsis of where we are with this organization and where we're going. Presently, our goal is to be open late summer, early fall of this year. Merrell Moore is our contractor on record and licensed and he's been providing a lot of his services for free. So far this year, since we've started, this group started around 2016 and we have raised about $184,000. Our expenses to date are about $146,000. $72,000 of that, y'all recall, was for the purchase of the house, which is on Cal Farm Road. It was previously the office for P.M. Moore. During this whole process, we have had tremendous support from the local churches of all religions and also from the businesses. We've had some nice support from businesses. First Source has been very generous with their donations. Also, we have had eight signed MOUs or Memorandums of Understanding with different organizations. About 30 of them have been approached here in Beaufort County, social services and other organizations like that. They are all ready to help. They know the need here is tremendous. The construction cost is about $100,000 to get this place up and running. Presently, right now, we have been very fortunate to have the blue hats from over at Cypress Landing providing all the labor for free and they have done a tremendous amount of work for us. And we now have the building stripped down and getting ready to sheet rock. Our immediate needs right now are the HVAC system. First Presbyterian Church has got a challenge going out with our congregation to raise the money for the HVAC and we have signed a contract for that. So things are moving real quick with this construction. Like I said, it's a need that we need tremendously in this county. Most of the people that you see that are homeless here, you would never know. And the reason they don't come forward, the reason they don't go to DSS or other organizations is because these ladies are scared. They're scared their children will be taken away from them. So they hide right out here in plain sight, right in front of you. They may be in a car at Walmart. They may be downtown just kind of walking around. The men usually you'll see, you can see them walking around the streets. The women with their children, you don't see them. They will couch, move around different people's couches until they get kicked out. They'll stay in their cars. And so this is a crying shame of this day and age that we don't have any organization here in Beaufort County to help with this need. The committees have visited just about every shelter within 100-mile radius around here. Getting a lot of information from down in New Bern has one, Rainbow has one. Inconsistently, they are calling us saying, hey, we've got some people from Beaufort County here. We can't let them in because we're full. And that's the problem we're running into is they're full everywhere around here. And so we need that opportunity here for these women and children. This is not a place where women are just going to camp out for six months and they're gone. They will sign contracts. They will be encouraged to better themselves through further education so that when they get out, they can be productive members of Beaufort County and just help everybody. Thank you for your time and I'll entertain any questions.
Chairman?
Yes.
A couple of things, Mark. Where is this property located? Where is this property located and how many people are y'all going to house?
Okay, it's up on Cal Farm Road. So you know where P.M. Moore's office was? It's that building right there. So the county sold that when they were selling that other building right beside me and so we acquired it then. Once it's up and going, the facility can house nine people each at a time. In there, there will be an overnight house manager, so to speak, to stay there. People will be allowed to come in about 5:00, 5:30 in the afternoon and then they'll have to be out the door around 9:00. And the only reason we're not doing 24 hours right now is we don't have the staff or the money to fund that staffing. Down in New Bern, talking to those guys down in New Bern, they said the best thing you can do is start small. You can always expand. With that property out there, there's room behind there to expand if we need to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one is the Pantica Academy Historic Museum. Ms. Virginia?
Well, I think all of you are familiar with our buildings, so we won't start with how beautiful they are. I didn't say that, did I? The interesting thing that's going on, one of the more interesting things is this gentleman walked in our museum about a week ago and he says, "I'm from England and I've come to see your museum." Now, we got excited. This is, as far as I know, the only visitor we've had to actually come that far to see our museum. Maybe he had other things on his agenda, I don't know. But anyway, that was an exciting moment for us and he seemed to really enjoy being there. So that was a pleasure. And the other delightful thing I want to tell you about right quick is we had 36 kindergartens to come. Now, that's a bunch of sweet kids and quite a challenge. But the most famous statement was they were in the George Dupont old office and we have about six crosscut saws hanging on the wall. Now, I assume y'all all know what a crosscut saw looks like. And they're hanging up there on display and one little fellow looks up and he says, "I've never seen a chainsaw that looked like that." So these things are just precious things that we do treasure and we loved having them. The kids were really, you wouldn't think children that young would be impressed, but they enjoyed it and we enjoyed having them, so that was good. We are the keepers of the story in Pantica and the story I want to tell you right quick should make you happy. You allotted us $1,000 last year. And with that $1,000, we added 2,000 of our blood, sweat, and tears that we had earned and we hired a Beaufort County contractor. He was a Waters, by the way. He was very good. He hired two or three helpers. Some days it was two, some days it was three. And he was doing the work upstairs, which we had requested the money for, the $1,000, the work upstairs in the big building, the one on the National Register. He bought the lumber supplies and the things he would need. Of course, he furnished his own tools, but the supplies he was going to need to work up there, he bought those from Beaufort County Lumber Company. It took about two weeks' work that they worked and then we, including that $1,000 that U-Haul had given us and the 2,000 that we had put with it, we paid him. And of course, then he paid his helpers. And then they all went home and went about their life and used their water, probably their Beaufort County water. It's good stuff. I've got it and I like it. They have children in school, no doubt. They were buying shoes, clothes, all this kind of thing with this money. This $1,000 is beginning to go back into the economy. The Beaufort County economy is being fed by your contribution to the Pantica Museum and the way we've utilized it. They would have continued, and when they went, say, to Walmart to buy the new shoes, somebody working there was a Beaufort County citizen most likely who was also profiting from having a job in an indirect sense from that $1,000. And I feel good about it. We didn't waste a bit of it. It went straight back into the Beaufort County economy. And if you see fit to share some money with us as we go along, we will continue to use it that way. We never use any for our own personal means. Everything is volunteers. We've got a long way to go upstairs. The newest part of that building is now 109 years old and that's older than me. And anything older than me is going to take a lot of upkeep and fixing. All right, Frankie.
I was looking at your hood.
It really is, though. It really is. But it's a showplace in Beaufort County, those three buildings there, and they're well worth the effort and the time that's being put in them. And upstairs is going to be a big undertaking. We did get going a little bit with the Mr. Waters who we hired to work up there and we got started. But we've still got a long way to go on it and that's what we will be requesting, your assistance, whatever you feel like you can afford. Well, we can afford. It's my tax money too, you know? So we appreciate those thoughts and I don't really know any other good stories. Do you all have any questions? Well, I'd love to see your footprints coming through that building, the three buildings. I think you would be delighted with what you find. We hope so, anyway. Thank you.
The only thing we need to do is we need to add some of the Bath High School trophies, put them down there in the museum. We're right next to the Pantica High School. That's not going to happen.
Well, we have three trophy cases full of trophies that every time somebody comes from Chaco Innity or Bath, we say, "Look what we got while we were beating you."
Thank you.
But we're getting a lot of people who are not connected with the school at all. We get a goodly number from over towards Chaco Innity and Cypress Landing, a lot of visitors who want to come and see and they have no connection with it as a school. But as a museum, they're delighted and enjoying it.
Thank you very much for what you do. Our next one is Ruth House.
Ms. Wall?
Ruth House.
It is an additional request for $2,500. You're currently funding only that $2,500 and they're requesting an additional $2,500.
Sydney Dive Team.
Chairman Ward, if I may just introduce Chief Swain from the Sydney Dive Team. I want to give you guys, you have the wrong budget in your book. Sydney Fire Department budget got put in there somehow. But here's the Sydney Dive Team. It's quite different.
Rest assured, that's quite different.
So, Katie, I'll get you another one there. I'd just like to say a few words on what to take kids. It's time, but I did want to introduce them here in that the Sydney Dive Team has been very helpful for us in emergency services in the county in my time here. They've helped us out in dives, but also just in some of our boating accidents, not just body recoveries, but also in boating accidents. And in acquisition, I'm going to call it a new truck. It's not a new truck by any means. They found a really good deal in bringing a truck in. They had to replace a truck just for maintenance issues. This new truck they have in is adding a light tower to our county and also what I call a rehab unit in that it's a large truck which allows personnel to get in, which they've offered for rehabilitation. So I just want to throw that out and Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you for me.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak to you. Again, my name's Steve Swain. I'm the dive chief. Real quick, I've been in the county since 1997. I can't tell you how many calls we've had. It would take a while to figure that out. But what I'm here to do is for the last, the budget you should have, I just took five years and showed you what our expenditures have been. And probably for the last eight years, we've been a line item budget of getting $10,000. We don't waste our money, but as you can see, repair on the truck and insurance was killing us. Our insurance has gone up 30% in the last five years. Nothing we can do about that. The cost of the truck, hopefully we have eliminated that problem as we bought a, like we say, it's a new truck for us. But one thing I want to share with you about the truck is, what Carney said is it offers a light tower and stuff during emergencies. We were also able to help out the Pintown Fire Department. There was probably somewhere between $20,000 to $25,000 worth of extrication equipment on that truck. Hurst tools, reels, lift bags, that stuff, they were able to take that and put it in their substation because we don't use it. So, you know, the monetary part of it on that, you know, fire departments get to go out and they get to buy stuff off grants and stuff, well, they didn't have to this time, you know? They were able to, what we purchased. We're asking for a $5,000 increase in our budget just for the simple, just try to offset what things are going up and the money that we spent. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Are all y'all volunteers?
Every one of us is volunteers. We all work different jobs, you know, all around.
How many members do you have?
Right now, Commissioner Hood, I think it's 16. I'm fixing to pay workers comp and I could tell you that, you know, once I have to pay that. That's another, that's gone up. Used to, that was a flat rate of like $50. It's gone up now. That kills us. As y'all know, just insurance and service and equipment. Equipment we have is very unique. It is expensive, but you take care of it, lasts a long time. We got a dry suit that we bought in 1998. It's still used today. I ain't going to say I can fit in it like a used one, but there's some of us that still fit.
Any questions of Steve?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you one?
Yes.
Chief, just off the top of your head, how many hours does it take a trainee to become a rescue diver?
Oh, my gracious. Just to, you're looking, just to get certified in open water is, oh, 25 hours or so. But then to do the blackwater stuff, you're spending probably well over 100 hours to do that. And then that just, it grows. And there's a difference. I mean, it's nice to be able to go down and see these chairs, but I make this room dark, it creates a whole different environment for you.
So you have continuing education on?
We do. Actually, all of our divers have gone through what's called an ERDI and it's Emergency Rescue Dive Instructor Course that one of our members is an instructor. He taught us. We done that, oh, three years ago, I think it was, Karen. And the new members that we've got coming on, we've got about four now that we've got to do another Class Four. So we'll bring them up to speed and that basically goes through everything that we do, our search, patterns, how to handle situations, just dealing with the hazards of the tasks that we do. And one other thing we do, we bought a piece of equipment to go on our big boat. And one other thing we do, we bought a piece of equipment to go on our big boat, a side scan sonar. Not as fancy as the one the county has, but it is another useful tool that we use in helping when we have a drowning victim.
Thank you, Steve. Our next one is the Greater Bath Foundation.
This is a request from Greater Bath Foundation. They spoke at one of your previous commissioners' meetings requesting some funding and you directed them to come back into budget process, so this is that request.
Anybody have any questions? All right. BB Park Improvements, please.
PS Jones Park.
In, in my book, it says BB Park Improvements.
I was just telling them what it is.
We'll take that.
All right. I apologize, but I really want to present the budget.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you, Chairman Waters and Commissioners. My name is Wally Saline and I'm here representing the PS Jones High School Alumni Association We are a nonprofit organization with the purpose of protecting the legacy of the former PS Jones High School. Our association was successful working with the Beaufort County Schools in obtaining a grant from the Kate B. Reynolds Foundation in the amount of $200,000 to develop a park with a playground on the property located at the former high school. They're on the bridge, between Bridge and Pierce and 11th Streets. The grant is being administered by the Beaufort County Schools. The City of Washington also participated in the development of park by financing and the construction of a bathroom facility on the site, which has been completed. At this point, contracts have been signed to complete Phase One of the project, which consists of surveying and design work, the construction of a concrete walking trail and the construction of a shelter, which I noticed that they just started working on today. Well, maybe, maybe it was yesterday, but it's, they just started working on that just recently. An additional part of Phase One is to provide fencing around the perimeter of the complex. And that's what brings us to you today. We, we're here to ask you to provide additional funding. We need to complete Phase One of the project consisting of installing the fence. The quote for the fence is 17, and you have this information in front of you. Quote for the fence is approximately $17,681. The grant was, the grant has $8,318 remaining. That's unencumbered. This leaves a balance needed for the fence of $9,363 and some change. We're requesting, excuse me, requesting from you 50,000, I mean, not 50. My glasses are falling.
Bless your eyes.
Right. Yeah, I read my numbers wrong, excuse me. I requested $5,000. So, you know, you might say, well, you might get that, you know? Our association has two fundraisers to try to come up with the additional funding that is, that is needed, the additional funding that would complete the $9,300 that's needed. The fundraisers, including, we have a brick project, a brick sale project, Memorial Bricks that will be placed out there in the park and that's going quite well so far. And so, so we're anticipating having some funding from that and also from, we're planning, you know, fish fries and chicken dinners sales, the first one coming up in a couple of weeks. So that is the anticipated way that we're going to raise the remaining balance of this. So we're asking you for $5,000. Once Phase One is completed, then the Kate B. Reynolds Foundation might possibly, we've been led to believe, make an additional amount available to move into Phase Two, which consists mainly of playground equipment that'll be placed out there, you know, for the children. We feel we need, we feel we'll be in a strong position for a new grant with the demonstrated support of the Beaufort County, of Beaufort County Schools, the City of Washington and the local citizens who are working to make this project a reality. All of this is part of the Kate B. Reynolds efforts to provide assistance to, for citizens to have access to healthy living choices. And so, you have in front of you, you know, my handwritten note for the quest. You know, I did the best I could with this. So I hope that you'll accept that and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
All right. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I apologize for the wrong name.
No, no, no problem. It is, it is close to the BB Park, which is a project that I think is pretty much completed. This is across the street from what we're planning. It's boarded by 11th Street and 13th Street. And so, you know, we're hoping to have this, have this up and going by this. Maybe by fall.
Thank you. We have one more that's not in here. Is that correct?
Hello, my name is Meg Howdy. I am with the Washington Harbor District Alliance. Thank you for allowing me the time. I started back in January and unfortunately, we missed the timeframe to get on your schedule, so we appreciate your time. I've given you each a book that tells you a little bit about our project. We are currently working in renovating the old McClellan's Five and Dime, which is down on Main Street, right next to the turnage. And it has been empty for quite some time and had been made into two different opportunities and have sat there and we are in the process of building a farmer's market. But it's more than just a farmer's market. It is 16,500 square footage that is right there, that's been empty, like I said, on Main Street for quite some time. This will allow for us to really expand our opportunity for our agriculture to come to everyone in Beaufort County. There's a lot of great people that will come on Saturdays to our market. Then we do run that farmer's market on Saturdays. This is not going to take the place of our Saturday farmer's market. We will continue to offer that, but this will allow for us to expand our services. Right now, if you've got a farmer here in Beaufort County and they want to sell their items that they have grown on their land, they're only getting 10 cents to the dollar. This will allow for them to be able to sell to our community, bringing healthy, local food choices to our citizens of Beaufort County. We will also be allowed to expand on our agricultural history, the Underground Railroad Museum that is located in the caboose down by the Civic Center. They will be able to expand their services and have museum space within our building to allow for them to share about our agricultural history here in North Carolina and in Beaufort County. One of the key things is we are also partnering and have those partnerships in place already with the Agricultural Extension Office as well as Beaufort County Community College. We will have a certified commercial kitchen to allow for people to come in and see where these healthy items, how you can cook them and do healthy cooking classes as well as additional agricultural business classes, bringing our community college into downtown Washington. We also have the opportunity to work with the Small Business Training Center, which is located in the community college, and they will be coming and doing workshop classes in our education center that will be within this market. So it's a lot more than just a market where you can come and buy fresh produce. We are asking for a one-time request to be paid over three years of $15,000. And so, this would show your partnership with Beaufort County and the Harbor District Market to bring wonderful opportunities for our, our people of our county to enjoy our local healthy foods. We also, again, that educational piece, sharing the history of our wonderful county and bringing that for the visitors. Industry looks for place making and one of that is, is going to be a local place for people to buy residence downtown and other residents of the county to get fresh local goods as well downtown. This will also open up, with your partnership, open up other grant opportunities for us, one being the Golden Leaf Foundation. They want to see that our local citizens and our governments are involved. We do have a partnership already in place with the City of Washington and we ask for yours as well. Thank you.
Any questions of Meg?
Meg, did you say 15,000 over a three-year?
Over a three-year period, yes, sir. My information is on the last page, so feel free to reach out to me with any questions. I have lots of information that I can share with you. And, and please come by and I'll be glad to give you a tour of the building.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, you've been good.
Okay, we're down to cost of living adjustment for the water fund?
This, this is simply the 1% and 2% based on the, based on the payroll for the water department.
Okay, and the next one would be the amount at 2%?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's based on a $1.1 million payroll.
And the third item for expansion under the water is the 50,000 for the evaluation?
Yes. That's the solid.
I'm sorry, solid waste.
Well, there's solid waste, you got the 1% and 2% on that because you have a piece that funded out of solid waste. And then the solid waste system analysis that Christina spoke about last night, I believe.
Is that the last page?
That's the last page.
You've been good. You've been good, I'm proud of.
You guys, thank you very much for allowing us to move through. Any comments on our meeting for Thursday night?
Is there anything additional that you need from us in making decisions? Any additional information we can provide for you?
If anybody needs clarification, how about they just give you a call, you are in NEDA or send an email?
That'd be great. We just, if there's anything you need, let us know. Our assumption is that when you come in Thursday, you'll be ready to help us figure out a number.
All right, so that meeting's at 5:00 on Thursday?
Yes, sir.
And tomorrow's reevaluation, 4:30.
Well, we actually got an email from Cindy and she said that...
She's going to feed you. She's going to feed you, so you don't have to come a little early and get sworn in.
Okay, get sworn in, okay. All right. So that meeting's at, start, I mean, we'd need to be here around 4:30 and then the meeting starts at 5:00?
I hear any good news, I like that.
Please do.
Okay, we're going to recess this budget workshop and we'll meet again on Thursday night at 5:00. Thank you, good evening.